Good evening and welcome to the February 13th Planning and Zoning Commissioners Meeting. If you can please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shannon, we have roll call.
Messina?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
Mandel?
Here.
Rumpler?
Ward?
Here.
Okay, we need approval for minutes for 11:28-17 workshop and 19:18 PC meeting. And I'm getting a little feedback out here. I don't know if you guys are hearing it, a little echo.
It's fine on our end.
You're okay?
Is the audience audio okay?
Can you guys hear me out there? All right, thank you. So approval of minutes.
Sure, a motion to approve the 11:28-17 Planning Commission Workshop Minutes.
I have a motion to approve 11:28 PC workshop. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I need approval of the 19:18 PC meeting as well.
I move to approve the minutes of the 19:18 Planning Commission meeting as presented.
Okay.
Second.
There are motion approval and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This time any public comments besides what's on the agenda? Okay, none being, moving on. Staff comments?
Good evening Commissioners. We do not have any public hearing items next month, so we are going to work on a comprehensive plan, a workshop, possibly two. So stay tuned, we're trying to figure out the best information to present, possibly some presentations from different departments and other community partners. The East Sherman Leadership Committee met this week. We have about 30 community members that represent stakeholders, so business owners, property owners, neighborhood residents, and other community partners are helping us with that last part of the master plan, working with our consultant team. So I think that's off to a great start. There will be opportunities in March and April for the public to get involved with that as well. And then lastly Chairman Messina, do you want me to jump in on the Atlas waterfront now as well?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Let me interrupt you on that.
Yep, absolutely.
I did attend it as an individual and as kind of the Chair of the Planning and Zoning, and Hillary can elaborate on most of it, but as I said, I sent an email out, or Hillary sent an email out concerning that, so please all look at that, and Hillary can explain how your input can be put into it as well. So sorry, thank you.
Okay, no problem. So a little background, so the Atlas waterfront is the property that the city is in the process of purchasing. It's about 47 acres. And so as part of that, we wanted to hear from community organizations, and so we invited a number of organizations that fit under the six themes of the Coeur d'Alene 2030 vision to come and present information and their ideas on what they think would be appropriate for the site. There were a series of questions, and we did the turning point, which is the live polling to use clickers to vote. We were, we had 38 people that used the clickers, and then we had seven that did the paper voting. And so had a number of questions, including two test questions that wanted to make sure everybody knew how to use the clickers, and there weren't any fatal flaws with the process. So I did send out the results of that. We have the information posted online for community members to see, and we are asking for the commission just to review the feedback, the combined voting results, and if there's anything else that you want to be considered, that you think's important from the Planning Commission's perspective, to share that. They're asking for 25 words or less, and I know we have some feedback already from Commissioner Rumpler. So if you'd like to send that to me, I can combine it and submit that, and we're asking for that information to come in by this Friday.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it. Do we have any Commissioner comments at this point? I just want to state, are we having a meeting on March 13th?
To be determined, so that there's no public hearing items, but we may possibly have the workshop that evening. We'll figure out if that time slot still works for the commission, and if that works for possibly some of the other departments to come in and talk, as well as some of the other, possibly CDA 2030, maybe jobs plus, possibly Department of Labor to come and talk to us.
I'm going to be out of town that day, so whether we have...
Okay, so maybe a different day.
Well, I'll be gone from the 12th through the 22nd of March, but as far as if we have a planning and zoning meeting, then John would have to kind of step in, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Is timing of the essence on this?
On the comprehensive plan?
Well, on the meeting of the 13th and so forth, because Tom, I'd certainly think you as Chair would be very good to be there, and if we don't have, if we can schedule around your schedule, it would be very helpful, and just like we mentioned earlier, you're attending meetings, and it's important that you, that you're in any of the meetings we have.
Well, as far, are we talking about comprehensive plan meeting?
I'm talking about whatever we were talking about, 13th to 2030, Department of Labor and so forth.
Well, I know I'm gone, so I'm sorry to, you know...
Hey, we'll work on some possible dates with the commission, trying to aim for dates that Chairman can be there.
You can all come with me, but I don't know if that'll work. But yeah, whatever, you know, like I said, I'm gone the 12th through the 22nd. Anything around that, other than those days, is fine with me, I'll put it in my schedule. Okay, thanks. If that's it for Commissioners' comments, we will go into, we have an administrative issue here of SP 4-17 vacant consulting, request for one-year extension. And Sean, go ahead.
Good evening Planning Commissioners. As the Chair Messina has alluded to, last year we had special use permit 417, which was approved. They are requesting an additional year extension. They have not started construction at this time. Their justification letter is attached. That approval came on May 9th, 2017, so this, we didn't create a PowerPoint or anything because the public hearing has already happened, and they are requesting a one-year extension. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions, Sean? Okay. Is this just a simple roll call?
Move approval of the extension?
Second. I have a approval, request for approval from Luttrell, and who's second at? And second by Ingalls. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks Sean. The next is, we have three public hearings, the first one being SP 1-18 quasi-judicial KRB Investments LLC, proposed sales and service activities special use permit. Sean, go ahead.
All right. So this is the first special use permit of 2018, it's SP 118. There is a request for multiple uses in a manufacturing district on a single parcel, and I just want to explain the difference between that and the one that's coming next is very, very similar to this request. So they mirror each other, they're just on different parcels that are all centrally located along Shriver Way. So this request is for a 1.029 vacant parcel along Shriver Way. It's preliminarily known as 3877. We don't assign addresses until we actually get a building permit. We preliminarily assign them when they go through project review. So the applicant is requesting three, a total of three uses for each commercial and service activities on this parcel. So under commercial activities is business, supply, retail, sales, food and beverage, stores for on and off-site consumption, and specialty retail sales. The definitions of those are provided in your guys' packet. The next is the service activities, which is commercial recreation, personal services established, and professional and administrative offices. So this is the location map, this is the subject property, Shriver Way loops down and comes back up to Kathleen here, and Meadow Ranch, which is the only residential that's nearby, is up the hill and is a PUD. So there are three proposals that need to be met for a special use to be approved, and we'll move through those right now. Finding B8 is that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. From the 2007 comprehensive plan, this area is Ramsey Woodland. It falls in the stable established area, which is this purple color right here, and this is the subject property. Definition of stable established is there. Comprehensive plan objectives, there are four in there. The last one was public participation, which people are here, so we're meeting that requirement. And the objective 1.12, community design, 1.14, efficiency, and 2.01, business image and diversity. There's some text here of what Ramsey Woodland is today, and this was current in 2007. It's a little bit out of date now, but we will fix that shortly. And then what Ramsey Woodland is envisioned to be, you know, quote-unquote tomorrow. The characteristics here are listed as to what should be provided, and part of that alludes to the condition that planning has requested at the end, which is pedestrian and bicycle trails, although it's more connection to the existing sidewalk than a specific trail. All right. Finding B8B is that the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties. And the property is relatively flat, the area's zoned manufacturing and light manufacturing, and there's a number of different uses that have been approved over the years through special use permits, as well as uses by right in that area. It's kind of turning into a multi-use area for everything except for residential, which is somewhat adjacent. And here is that map, that's also in your staff report, of all the approvals of special use permits. The ones directly around Shriver Way are in this location, and then inside of the loop as well, so you can see that there's been a number of special use permits approved in the area. Land use map, this shows what those uses are, largely commercial. There is still some vacant land, although this map is slightly outdated right here. This is no longer vacant, and this is part of the next request. There is a building that sits here that would be red, and also commercial as well. The blue is civic uses, so there's quite a few civic uses in the area. Here is the zoning, as alluded to earlier, light manufacturing on the north side, there is one C17L property, and then the remainder is manufacturing. So here's some pictures of the subject property. This is taken from Shriver Way, looking north into the subject property. The extent of that property is right along here, if you can follow where my mouse is for those people at home. This is that internal paved access. It is not a public street, but it does provide access to all the buildings that are in there and proposed to be in there. That is done by way of easement, and the subject property is over here, kind of behind this pile of snow. And this is basically moving directly left and looking, this is the pile of snow we're just looking at, and looking south into the subject property. It is a vacant parcel. So the last finding is finding B8C is that the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. So we did get some responses, obviously, from our departments. Stormwater and streets both say that capacity is available, and they don't expect any snafus or problems to arise. There is also adequate water, as well as wastewater in the area. Fire department, this is fairly boilerplate language for them, they state that they're, that they will look at it at the time of final platter at building permit to make sure that their requirements are met. So here's a conceptual site plan. As I stated, the site is currently vacant. The applicant has gone through a project review, this was part of that, that project review, and this, as I said, is conceptual. There's two buildings that were proposed at the time, and there's a sidewalk along the front with some parking just to the, north is the wrong way here, so it's just to the west of the buildings. As part of the request for conditions, this planning staff is requesting that this sidewalk here extend across and connect to the existing sidewalk on the south edge, so that pedestrians can get to what was proposed at the time as a food establishment, so this little area out here is a patio area. So here are those two requested conditions from planning. One was to connect, as I was just talking about, and then the second would be to try and paint the asphalt where it makes sense and where it's feasible, so that these buildings can interconnect with some pedestrian walkways, and also show the auto traffic in the area that there could be pedestrians there and slow that traffic down. The one other thing I wanted to point out here, and this is in both of my staff reports, is what the, real quick, performance standards are a little bit different in a manufacturing area than they are in a commercial area, and so I pointed that out in my staff report, more to let the applicant know that if a manufacturing use happens to locate next door, and it's a little bit loud, or dusty, or something like that, that the zoning takes precedence, which is manufacturing. And with that, that'll conclude my staff report. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, and the applicant is also here to answer questions, if you have any questions for the applicant.
Any questions, Sean? I forgot to ask, does any of the Commissioners have a conflict on this? Okay. That's it?
Okay.
I have a sign-up sheet with no one on it, so I take it the applicant who is here would need to say anything? Welcome to? Not? No? Okay. You're good?
He's good.
All right, then I will close a public comment on this application and call for a proposal or a discussion.
It seems to me that, you know, we've notified the individuals and concerned that manufacturing takes precedent, so they're not going to be bothered by that. And secondly, it seems that we've sort of set the standard in this because we've set, accepted special use permits along the same line, in the same area, so it's sort of, you know, it seems to me consistent with, to approve this and any others that may be coming down the pike.
Okay.
But the key factor is it still stays manufacturing.
Yes, the underlying zone will stay manufacturing. I did get one phone call from a gentleman who owns property across the street. He's currently in California, and he asked what the uses are, I explained them to him, and he said, "Well, it's about time," because I think he wanted a restaurant in the area. So that was the feedback I got.
Okay, great, great. Any other discussion? Someone want to do some findings on this, please?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
This matter having come before the Planning Commission on February 13th, 2018, and there being present a person requesting approval of item SP 1-18, request for a multiple uses special use permit in the manufacturing zoning district. The applicant is KRB Investments LLC. The location is A-plus or minus 1.029 acre parcel along Shriver Way, commonly lean loan as 3887 North Shriver Way. First of all, our findings are the justification for the decision and criteria for items B1 through B7 are kind of standard, and we'll follow through with those. On item B8A, the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan as follows, and we go through community design, the efficiency, business image and diversity, and public participation, which has all been met. B8B, the design and planning of the site is compatible with the location, or flat. The setting is a manufacturing and light manufacturing, but the usage and many special use permits have occurred in this area, is sort of more exceptions than conformists, and the existing uses in the adjacent properties, so it sort of falls right into the category. B8C, the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. And this is based on input from the city and all the various departments of water and sewer, et cetera. And in conclusion, pursuant to the aforementioned, we find that the Investments LLC should have a special use permit as described in this application, and should be approved with the two following special conditions set by the planning department. One, provide an accessible paved pedestrian connection from the entrances of the proposed buildings to the existing sidewalk along Shriver Way. And two, design pedestrian connections to abutting parcels where feasible. Painted asphalt would be acceptable to cross vehicle lanes when no opportunity exists to provide separated pathways.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. SP-1-18 is approved. The next hearing we have is SP-2-18 quasi-judicial GP Land Company LLC, proposed sales and service activities special use permit. Hi Sean.
Hello. I was going to say ditto and do a mic drop, but I don't think that'll work for the record. It's largely the same request, it's a different, it's under a different name or different LLC, which is why I think that they made two separate requests. And this request actually has three parcels, same exact request for special use permits in the same area. So moving forward, here are the subject properties. It was a little messy for me to try and number them here, but as we move through some of the pictures, this is known as Site 1 here, Site 2, and then Site 3. As mentioned before, there is a building on this property, but at the time that I took a screen capture of my GIS data, that didn't show up, so I just wanted to point that out. Three findings, B8A, B, and C. And the first is that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Once again, it's the Ramsey Woodland area, it's in a stable established land use category, and here are the properties where they fall inside of that Ramsey Woodland area. The same comprehensive plan objectives, 1.12, 1.14, and 2.01, as well as public participation. And the Ramsey Woodland today language, that can be found in your staff report, as well as the Ramsey Woodland tomorrow language, and what the characteristics of that area will be. Finding B8B is that the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties. As mentioned before, surrounding area is zoned light manufacturing and manufacturing. There's a number of different uses in the area, BLM office, Coeur d'Alene Police Department, Sider Summit, Trickster's Brewing, hardware sales, beverage distributor, USPS, and et cetera. So it's quite the mix of uses in the area. Here again is that map of special use permits that have been approved in the area. This is where it made the most sense to number the sites, because the underlying map was white. Here are the subject properties, as mentioned before, this is not vacant, there is currently a building there, it should be red. The remainder is commercial uses with civic in blue, and the areas are kind of in the light tan as vacant. Zoning, as mentioned, manufacturing to the south, light manufacturing to the north, across Howard and up the hill is C17, and over here is kind of three zones on a single parcel that the city uses where the fire department is. I call it the Neapolitan Zone District, because there's three zones in one parcel. All right, so here's the, a picture of Site Number 1, and this was taken from Shriver Way. It's looking kind of north, northwest. You can see that it's a multi-tenant structure. This is Site 2, right next door, and that, what I, what was labeled as vacant on the land use map, similar in use, but smaller in size, so I believe there's four suites on this property. And then this is the access that runs through. This is Site 1, Site 2, and on the previous hearing, this is where I took the picture looking south, so this access runs through the property here east-west, and then heads north-south and reconnects to Shriver Way. And that shabby fabrics back there, if anybody didn't know, they're growing quickly. This is the one we just discussed, SP 118 over here, and right across, and it's not really a street, but the access is Site 3, which is currently vacant. So finding B8C is the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. Once again, the utilities are there, and they are of sufficient capacity to supply the subject properties in this case. So here are site plans, and like I recently said, that this is an existing structure, this is where the access moves through, and then connects down through an easement to head, to connect back to Shriver Way. This is the building that is built next door with the four suites. This is the access that runs through, and then heads to the south. This where it says future building is where the shabby fabrics building currently exists. And then this is the remainder site, which is the vacant parcel at the edge of Shriver Way, which is just to the south. So because the other two buildings are already constructed, it makes it difficult to try and come in and retrofit access to a sidewalk. The sidewalk is connected right now, so I placed a new construction only, kind of monkier on this, to provide accessible paved pedestrian connection for the vacant lot. And then 2 is the same sort of painted pathways where feasible to connect these uses that all use the common access together, so that people can move from building to building and not have to get in their car to drive 100 feet. Hopefully that'll work. And with that, Planning Commission will need to consider this request, to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. Is there any questions?
Any questions, Sean?
I have a question.
Sure.
So it seems that there are more special use permits in this area than non-special use permit?
We're to that point, yes.
Okay, so is there a point at which all the special use permits are going to create excessive burden on city services to support different function or different purpose?
You know, we look...
If there's more traffic, if there's more citizen use, are we getting, are we, do we anticipate getting to a point where all those special use permits would warrant a zone change?
Well...
Or create a new burden on city services?
Yes and no. So each, each one of these requests is looked at separately, and so the city departments weigh in as they move through. So if they see a concern, it'll obviously make it to the staff report. What we find a lot of times, depending on what these uses are and what they're approved, is, you know, an office space generally doesn't take a whole lot of wastewater or water, where in manufacturing, if you're bottling water, for example, it would require a whole lot more. So it's tough to say, you know, and I hear what you're saying with possibly rezoning the area to make it more upon, more, I guess, congruent with, is the best word I could come with at the moment, with what has already been approved as far as the special use permits go. But in doing that, we would make a lot of the manufacturing uses that already exist non-conforming.
Okay.
So we're weighing that out, you know, and, and I think ultimately what happens with a special use permit is if they happen to leave or quit doing the work there that they got approved for after two years, it would expire, and that underlying zone would come into play again.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Sorry for the long answer.
I think that brings up an excellent issue. Special use is just, we pictured it's just special, but if all of a sudden it becomes common, maybe when we go through our comprehensive plan, we may have a discussion on special use permit, is there a limit to how many special use permits we want to provide in a certain area or for certain conditions? It doesn't mean we do it, but just have some discussion, because I think the points you made are fairly valid.
Or is there even a new zoning designation that doesn't exist yet that accommodates these sorts of things in certain areas, you know? The discussion...
It's nice to see that the land is being put to use.
Correct, yeah, and we're getting to the point where build-out is, you can see the light at the end of the tunnel for build-out there.
Yeah, and to be clear, it's less, for me, it's less an individual special use permit, and more just a question about cumulative effect of special use permits.
Okay, appreciate that. Make note, Peter, to discuss that when we have our workshop.
I will, I'll be more than happy to.
All right, thank you. No more questions for Sean? We'll let him go sit down again.
Thank you.
I have one person on the sign-up... I have one person on the sign-up sheet, unless the applicant is here to speak, unless this is the applicant. It's a Rob Rollins. He wishes to speak. Wanna come on up? And Rob, I just need your name and address, and I'll swear you.
Rob Rollins, 3906 North Shriver Way, Coeur d'Alene.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I really don't have any objections to what Chris is doing. I think he does everything first class, and so I don't do that. What my question is, could you pull up the map for me, please? I appreciate that. Is the one where you can see Kathleen, that's, that's good. What my, what my concern is ultimately, like Ms. Mandel says here, is if this place is continuing to get built up, we're really gonna have traffic issues on Kathleen as Shriver hits Kathleen. Because as it is right now, you have Howard is a stoplight. There's no way you can put another stoplight right there at Shriver because it's too close. Over here, where you have the school, you have, can you point up to the green, please? Or may I use this? Is that okay? So you have Ramsey right here. You have a manufactured home park right here. The traffic here continues to try to come and go down Kathleen like this. These people here are always constantly trying to exit like this. It creates a, it creates a hazard, especially around school time. Then you have Charter getting out here, which creates people trying to get in and out this way, and it's just, it's just a nightmare. So I don't have any objection to what he's, what they're doing, but I am saying that the commission somehow, I don't know what you would do for, from traffic control, because right now it's getting pretty hectic out there at certain times of the day. And depending upon what additional businesses go in that area, I could see that dramatically increasing. I really could. The other thing, and I don't know that it matters, you said that there was gonna be a crosswalk or something like that right here. I don't know if it matters, but there's no continuous crosswalks to Kathleen. There's no cross, or sidewalks, excuse me. There's no sidewalks here, and probably about here, there's no sidewalk. So people are walking out in the streets. I don't know if it makes a big difference or not. I don't know what, what you require of vacant land.
To answer your question, when a vacant parcel like that, and they come forward with a building permit, that's at the point where the city assesses to put in sidewalk.
Oh, the city's responsible for these vacant parcels?
Correct.
Oh.
Correct. Now, if there's existing structures that are already there that do not have sidewalks, that gets a little more dicey for us.
Right.
At that point, we have to wait until there's a change of use.
Right.
And they bring forward a building permit, at that point, we would get sidewalk.
No, these are just vacant lots on the other side of Allegra. It's a vacant lot, and there's no sidewalk there. And then between myself, which is, I think I'm about right here somewhere, this, I think this is the vacant lot, yeah, this is a vacant lot. There's no sidewalk there on that vacant lot, but there is as it continues up there. So the only thing to consider is just traffic flow in the future as this, as this whole area builds up. I really think, especially with the school, I think there's really gonna be some issues there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it. That's the only person I have signed up. I will close public hearing at this time and call for motion and/or discussion. Go ahead, Lynn.
Sure, why not? This matter, having come before the Planning Commission on February 13th, 2018, and there being present a person requesting approval of item SP dash two dash eighteen, request for multiple uses special use permit in the manufacturing zoning district. The applicant is GP Land Company LLC. Location are three parcels near Shriver Way commonly known as 3895, 3881, and 3871 North Shriver Way. Our findings, following the justification for the design and criteria standards and facts relied upon the Planning Commission adoption of items B one through B seven. On point B eight A, the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This follows, it follows our community design, efficiency, business image, and diversity in public participation. B eight B, the design and planning of the site is compatible with the location, which is flat, the setting, which is a mixed-use manufacturing, light manufacturing area with multiple special use permits throughout, and existing uses on adjacent properties. B eight C, the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that development will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services, all testified by our various departments. And C, as an order of conclusion and decision, the Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds the GP Land Company LLC for special use permit as described in the application should be approved with the following special conditions applied. First, for new construction only, because some of these are existing lots that have already been developed out. They need to provide an accessible paved pedestrian connection from the entrances of proposed buildings to the existing sidewalk along Shriver Way. And two, the pedestrian, designed pedestrian connections to a budding parcel is where feasible. Painted asphalt will be acceptable to cross vehicle lanes when no opportunity exists to provide separated pathways.
Thank you. I have a motion by Fleming.
Second.
I have a second by Mandel. Roll call.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mandel?
Aye.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay. SP dash two dash eighteen, proposed sales service activity special use permit passes. Thank you. Next up, we have the City of Coeur d'Alene, a modification to zoning ordinance section seventeen dash zero one dash zero one zero. This is a legislative item.
This item is a proposed zone change. It is for the zoning code subdivision ordinance and part of the city code. I'll go over approximately sixteen of the main items that we discussed, but I'm gonna start off a little, the decision point. The decision point tonight is the staff is requesting a recommendation from the Planning Commission to City Council for the proposed code amendments to the zoning code, subdivision code, and other sections of the city code. Just give a little background on this. On June 6th, 2017, the City Council adopted a work plan from the planning department, for the planning department, that included general zoning code amendments, subdivision code, and other code amendments. Workshops with the Planning Commission on code amendments were held on July 11th, August 22nd, and November 28th, 2017. First item is egress windows. The proposed code is allowing two feet from the side property, and the existing code is two and a half feet, so it's very hard to fit in an egress window on a side property line. So the staff is recommending a two-foot setback on the side. Here's a couple images of that. And here's the language of, the current code is two and a half, and the proposed is two feet. The next item is building setbacks for accessory structures. There's a couple photos that I've taken, showing some of the setbacks that are existing now. And the existing code allows for a zero-foot setback distance from residential zones for detached structures, but requires a minimum five-foot setback if the roof slopes towards the property line. The proposed code will require a three-foot minimum setback from the side and rear lines in residential zones for detached accessory structures, and it will allow for a zero setback if the house or the detached structures along alley lot line. The city engineer has submitted comments on this, and he would like them to be read into the record, and the first one is, all accessory structures shall be set back for the neighboring properties at least five feet. The setback may be reduced to three feet if the structure's roof does not slope toward the neighboring property. A three-foot setback is permitted at alleys. And Chris is here to speak to this after my presentation. The next one is shipping containers. Some people put these in their backyards for sheds, and we've discussed this, and we do not like, allowed in the city. And the current code does not address this specifically, and the adopted proposed code will prohibit shipping containers as storage buildings, accessory to residential uses, commercial zones, and residential as, is the principal use in the C seventeen L and downtown core and all, and field zoning districts. However, shipping containers would be permitted as an accessory structure in the C seventeen, the light manufacturing, and the manufacturing districts, with some safety improvements and a building permit. And some of those safety improvements would be an egress out of the building, so in case someone got locked in there, they'd be able to have a door, panic door to get out. The next item is parking requirements for accessory dwelling units. Currently, the code does not require a parking, off-street parking space, and the proposed code is recommending one off-street space for each ADU, and this would be consistent with the short-term rental ordinance. Ribbon driveways. We've had a lot of calls, if we can install these, and our code really doesn't say you can, and so we thought it would probably be a good idea for single-family dwellings if someone would like to put this in as an option, that they would be allowed to. And the code, so we added that as part of our code, that homeowners can put this in. Another thing we're adding is the grasscrete driveways. If a homeowner would like to put in this as an option, this would now be, it doesn't really clearly say in our code, and this will clearly say that they can. The next item is sidewalk installation. This is one of the items that we did not discuss with you in one of our workshops. We discussed this in our development review team, and we thought it was necessary to bring forward for you guys to discuss and listen to this part. Right now, our current code doesn't require, it has an exemption that if someone builds a certain, if they're not within 400 feet, 450 feet, they don't have to put in a sidewalk. So staff is recommending that the code removes this provision to waive the sidewalk requirement consistent with the adopted Trails and Bike Wade Master Plan. The Trails Coordinator is here as also, and his comments are, the Parks and Recreation Department approves of all the changes in the zoning code. We will fully support the changes to the sidewalk requirements as it will provide pedestrian, pedestrians a safe place to walk. And the Trails Coordinator is here to address any questions you may have. The hardship variance was brought forward by one of the City Council members. They thought the old existing house was built too close to the property line back in, before 1946. For example, this property line here, if this was destroyed over 50%, they would have to be back 10 feet here and 20 feet here, and then they would have to meet the current code. And they would, this house, but the proposed code will allow this type of building to be built over the same footprint as long as the same square footage and height above ground. So they couldn't build a taller building, they would have to meet the same exact structure was there, as far as size. The next one is filling and burming up lots. This is just a picture showing off someone filling in a lot prior to construction. The current code does not address the building up of raising up of lots prior to construction, and proposed codes will not allow burming, filling, or raising of a lot, but defer to the hillside ordinance for hillside lots. Maximum number of residential uses on a lot. Our current code doesn't really clearly specify how many lots should be or required on it, so we wanted to make it clear that if you're in a residential zone, two dwelling units would be allowed on one lot. Now, if you had enough square footage for more, you can subdivide it and then add those lots, and add those units. So the proposed codes will allow a maximum of two dwelling units on a lot in a residential zoning district. Construction permits for 120-square-foot accessory uses, accessory structures in the residential zone. Right now, if you have anything under 200 square feet, you pretty much, you're supposed to meet the setbacks, but people just pretty much drop these buildings anywhere on their property, and they're not meeting the setback requirements. So staff is recommending 120-square-foot, they apply for a building permit, but it'd only be a site plan where they would have to show us where they're gonna set it so they meet the setbacks, and we'd go out there and make sure that the building does meet the setbacks. And we work with the building department on this, and they're okay with this code language. Projections above maximum height. The current code allows certain items to project above the maximum height for structures. This is primarily in the residential zones where people put like an elevator and go to the top and just try to access, put a deck up there, but they're saying they're accessing rooftop equipment. So we wanted to kind of make it clear that, you know, you, certain things would be allowed, like chimneys, you know, natural things that go with houses that should be above, but not to just make your height, try to push the code limit to go above the height limit. ADUs in basements, we discussed this, and the Planning Commission recommended that ADUs should be allowed in basements, and we just, that was in the code, so we kept that. The neighborhood commercial maximum height for accessory structures, this was not in the code at all, it didn't have any height limits, so it wasn't clear, so we just made this compatible with all our other zoning districts, that this was clear, that the height would be established for accessory structures. Caretaker's residence. Current code does not have code requirements for caretaker's unit, and we're proposing some use standards that would go with the caretaker's units, such as parking requirements, maximum size is 1,400 square feet, setbacks, occupancy, and building height. This was just not called out prior to that. Last item is other housekeeping items, and the current code needs amendments in several areas to fix inconsistencies in streamlining the notice provisions consistent with the state statutes. We brought those forward in a separate other part on the, in the staff report, and those proposed amendments are addressed these issues. The decision point tonight is to make a recommendation to the City Council on the proposed code amendments to approve, deny, or to direct staff to make changes. Was there another one? And that concludes my presentation. The city engineer is also here to make his little presentation, and so is Monty, the Trails Coordinator.
We have any questions of Mike at this point? None? Okay.
Okay.
I have two sign-ups. First is Art. You're in favor.
Who knows? I checked both.
And you don't need to testify?
No, I do want to testify.
Yes, come on up.
Chairman, may we have Chris Bosley do his part of the presentation first?
I'm sorry.
May we have Chris Bosley, city engineer, do his part of the presentation first?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
That'd be helpful, so we can clarify his setbacks.
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't prepare a presentation, but I just came to kind of justify my comment on the setbacks for the accessory structures. And the way that the code was written before, it allowed for a five-foot setback, or that was the, the minimum setback, unless there were other circumstances, and people were always finding these loopholes to try to shove those structures closer and closer to the line. But one problem that we see a lot, and it's engineering that deals with stormwater when those calls come in, and we see snow sliding off of roofs or just rainwater itself, and there are requirements for sloping the ground away from a structure when it is built, but when it's too close to the property line, you really can't do that and meet the city requirement that you retain all stormwater on your site. So if you're too close to the property line, you're naturally shedding onto the neighbor's property. And then also with roofs, if you've got a three-foot setback and a two-foot overhang on your eve, guaranteed that snow is gonna fall onto the neighboring property. And we've heard complaints of snow sliding, or snow and ice sliding off onto people's gas meters, or over the fence into other people's property, and then in the wet times in the spring, which we thought we were coming up to until tonight, we would have just people complaining about stormwater off of other people's lots. And I was just hoping to try to mitigate that by keeping these structures a little further away, and I know there's a lot of other exceptions out there with PUDs, and this doesn't apply to the, the main structures, or the fact like the hardship case that Mike had shown on there. You know, there are those circumstances that are out there, but I was just trying to make a statement that it would be nice to try to keep this from happening. And alleys aren't as big of a concern for me. I think putting a house or a garage, for instance, right at an alley is pretty inconvenient in being able to turn into that, into that garage, but it's not a drainage issue so much, you know, in that kind of circumstance. What I'm trying to prevent is the disputes between neighbors of stormwater, snow, whatever form that liquid is in, to keep those, those problems from occurring between neighbors.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you, what do you, do you have any recommendations for us then?
They were in the staff report, yes, that, that five-foot is preferable, but it could be reduced to three-foot if the structure is designed to keep the snow or, or water from shedding onto that property. That doesn't mean that the roof would have to slope away from that property, it could, it could slope parallel to that property line, just trying to keep that water from, or snow, from landing on the adjacent property. snow, from landing on the adjacent property. That's, that's my only concern.
Well, the eaves could be shorter if it is a three-foot setback than a two-foot, you know, max, most of the time the eaves are two feet, you can have them a little bit less, and now you know it's going to at least slide onto their property.
That would certainly help.
Okay. Any other questions? Chris? Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, back to Mr. Elliott. Come on up. Oh, I'm sorry.
If we can have Monty McCollum come up and speak about the sidewalks first, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed a whole scenario, who else is going to talk? I'm just trying to get you up here, Art.
I didn't know if you had any questions about the portion of the zone change that's about regarding sidewalks. So as you all know, the southeastern portion of Coeur d'Alene is an older portion of town. A lot of places don't have sidewalks, don't have connections. We don't have a vehicle to get new sidewalks in. And I'm the liaison to the Ped Bike Committee, and it's been one of our missions, is to try to make it safer for people in wheelchairs, and people walking, pedestrians, as well as bicycling. So the current code says if you're 450 feet away from a sidewalk, you don't have to put a sidewalk in. Well, we're never going to get sidewalks built if we don't start having them built. So somebody comes in and makes a change, $30,000 change or more, then they have to put a sidewalk in. A few years later, the next-door neighbor does, pretty soon you have a connecting network. Right now, it would take 100 years before we got that all connected. So if you have any questions about that.
What does the Ped Bike Committee and the sidewalks, I don't know the connection?
The connection with the Ped Bike Committee and the sidewalks? Well, their, their mission isn't just bicycles, it's also pedestrians and getting around. We actually went out a few years ago and surveyed the entire city and noted where sidewalks were and where they weren't, and made that into GIS layers, so that we have that knowledge to where they're, where they're at and where they're missing. We also did ADA accessibility ramps on corners, just we have that all in a database.
So you can ride bicycles on sidewalks?
No, no, so you can walk sidewalks. Ped and bike, not just bike.
You have, you have a survey of all the property that doesn't have sidewalks now?
Yes, we do.
And so then I'm sure that the, what I call older Coeur d'Alene, traditional Coeur d'Alene, below Sherman, between 8th and 23rd, you have a pretty good idea of the area that doesn't have sidewalks.
That's correct, yeah.
And those haven't had sidewalks for 70 years, 77 years, 80 years. And I think it's part of the tradition, part of the beauty of our community, of the local community, of that area, of the streets without sidewalks. You look and if you have a 10-foot cut to get a sidewalk from the curb, from the road in is 10 feet? Is that what would be required?
Well, I don't believe so. Sidewalks are five feet, depends on what.
So they can be right, neck, right on the curb? Well, five feet or 10 feet. I would encourage you to, to look and see how many trees would have to be removed, how many fences would be penetrated, have to be removed. You know, you just, I have a pretty strong feeling on this because I lived in the area. And I walked around my block, and there were 20 trees that would have to be removed. Now, maybe I miscounted, maybe it's only 10. But it would be a severe effect on our neighborhood. And you come down our neighborhood in the summertime, you come in there in the Christmas, Thanksgiving, so forth, and you look at the people walking the streets. They enjoy that. It's not, there's not a safety issue, I don't know, know of no accidents that have happened. In fact, I think it's a calming effect on the traffic. It would, it would be a, it would wreck our unique and natural area in our, in our neighborhood of southeast Sherman. It really would, Monty. And I, I'll say more about that when we, when we talk.
Yeah, and certain neighborhoods, like down by Sanders Beach, that might be something that you look at differently, but there's certain places like on 15th, or, I'm sorry, Mullen, that you have sidewalk, then no sidewalk, then sidewalk, then no sidewalk. And right now, we have a one-sided bike lane that is a Centennial Trail that's 10 feet wide on one side, and it's really dangerous. We want to separate that, but we can't remove the Centennial Trail without putting sidewalks in, because otherwise people would be walking in the streets, and that's definitely not danger, not safe. So there are certain areas where it's definitely much safer where there's higher traffic.
Well, I just encourage you to look at South 12th, from Mullen to the lake. Look at Ash, from 11th to the entrance to the resort lane, or whatever it's called there. Look at Dollar, from Young, where the sidewalk stopped in 1947, or 41, down to the end of Dollar. You know, I, I think that, I don't know if it's you, the planning commissioner, but you need to do some more studying on this. I would argue with you on safety of bike paths and so forth in certain areas, but an overall change of this nature in our, in this traditional Coeur d'Alene area would be catastrophic. It would be catastrophic. Thank you.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Monty, thanks for what you do, and you're a real strong advocate for bikes and pedestrians and whatnot. Kudos to you. And don't take this as a shot, because you do great, great things in the city, I'm your biggest ally. However, I totally agree with Commissioner Lou Tripp here, and I think we got to caution about being overreaching, you know. I think this isn't just southeast Sherman, there's lots of good examples there. But, you know, go up into the Fairway Hills around the golf course area where they're, for whatever reason, they just decided, hey, this is an area with, with no sidewalks. Indian Meadows is another. Shattuck Lane, Atlas, there's a lot of streets that, you know, they were put in without curbs even, you know, or whatnot, but to go into an area like Indian Meadows or whatnot and retrofit sidewalks or whatnot, I just don't, I just don't think, you know, makes sense. For whatever reason, these places were developed the way they were. We've approved a lot of PUDs, little pocket developments, like the one I live in, that doesn't have sidewalks at all, you know, and, you know, that's, so it's not just the older neighborhoods even, but we've approved, you know, some of these cottage groves and, and what the heck's the name of the one I live in? Something Rose. No, it's, yeah, I guess Park Rose, yes. But any rate, I, I just, I would be in favor of leaving it alone, and I think it's, it's just overreaching. Not to discourage the great work you do, Monty.
It might be something that we, that we look at and come back with a different approach, maybe certain neighborhoods that don't have anything that are intact, but then other neighborhoods that are block on, block off, or even half-block on, half-block off, where people are walking and creating paths and, like towards, around schools where it's more dangerous. That might be something that we could look at.
That makes a lot of sense, yes.
Yeah, if I may chime in, I think the safe routes to school is another reason that this code amendment was brought forward, because we are now trying to retrofit and look at areas to try and provide safe walkways for students to be able to walk to school, because obviously we're trying to fight the childhood obesity and all these other things that are detrimental in the community, and so it's a balancing act. But I think, I think that's a good idea to look at, maybe where we would want to implement this, and if there's any kind of program we could put into place with that.
Mr. McCollum, make sure that my comments on sidewalks are directed at the subject, not you. I share John's appreciation for what you do for the city.
And I just want to, Hillary, we had our workshop on some of this, this was, was this part of one of them?
No, yes, and I apologize, this was something that came up, we talked about it at the development review team, so staff had talked about it, and it's been talked about for a while, and so we thought it was a good opportunity to tag it on, so apologize that it wasn't something that had been vetted before, so can certainly pull this item out.
Okay, so we have some options here tonight, but, okay, great. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Have I missed anyone before I try to get Art up here again? Okay, Art, you can come up now.
Three times the charm.
Absolutely.
Additional pass out, one for you and one for...
John is in here.
And Art, I just need your name and your address, please.
Art Elliott, 610 South 18th Street, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho.
Thank you.
I apologize for being here at the 11th hour. I apparently was not paying as much attention as I should have when these changes were discussed. So there are four areas that I would like to discuss. The first is, and Mike made a presentation to the Builders Association, and there was discussion regarding the 100, reduction to the 120-square-foot requirement, but you saw the word "building permit" was in there, rather than "site plan permit." And I certainly would not like some building official in the future to insist that that be built to the building code with all the inspections, because it's my understanding from planning that that was not the intent. That's number one. Number two, 17.06-930, the hardship. This discriminates against houses that were built after September 23rd, 1946, that at the time they were built, were fully, fully built to the building code setbacks at that time. So for example, a house that was built in, on September the 22nd, 1946, that only sat five-foot back of the property line may be rebuilt with the same footprint, but a house built on September 25th, 1946, that may have already had a 15-foot setback, setback that was at the requirement at the time, cannot be rebuilt. I would suggest you think about adding wording, saying that homes built before 1946 are those that were built to the building code that was in effect at the time. Second item, do you want to, shall I wait and ask questions or clarifications?
Why don't we kind of go through all this and then?
17.06.035, fill in birmingham. What this does, it perm, it prohibits filling completely. If you had a lot that for some reason, over a period of time, had a depression on it, and its neighbors were higher, you would be forced to build and create drainage issues. I would suggest wording be added to that area, that it must, you know, that it conformed to the existing neighborhood, but not, if there'd been an excavation years ago and there's a five-foot, it's five-foot below its neighbors, would not be required to reduce it to that. The third one has been addressed by several of the commissioners, and there was a, I did a handout earlier that I believe that you have about sidewalks.
Yes.
That shows, and just that we would have suggested and pointed out that for every additional, and addition, and I, we walk all the time. My wife, my wife walks, walks, walks. I only walk. But, so walking is important, but in areas where there are no sidewalks, they should not be required to be. The illustration that I gave you shows a piece of property, Boyd and 10th, and there's no sidewalks visible in any areas, those homes are all built. It would be more dangerous going on and off sidewalks to get to the street than it would be to leave it alone. And it, it prices out that, a corner lot, that particular corner lot would be $4,000 to put those sidewalks in, plus with the new code that we have to maintain them, that then they would have to be maintained or fined. And I think that's it, unless you have any questions about any of those.
Questions for Art? No? Thank you, Art, appreciate it.
Welcome, Thomas.
Next, I have Kevin Jester, and he's in favor, and he does want to say a few words. Kevin, just name and address.
Kevin Jester, 316 Forest Drive.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, commissioners, good evening. I'd like a two-part comment here. First is just a shout-out. Being good stewards of the quality of the community requires clear, comprehensive, and objective thinking. Zoning codes are dynamic documents. Communities adjust to changes of infrastructure, growth, and economic stimulus. I appreciate the city planning department, and the commission, and your work in keeping the CDA Coeur d'Alene zoning codes, both current and in character with the unique qualities of our community. So I appreciate the work you all do in taking a look at this. So that's part one, it's just a shout-out, thank you. Second is, I had the opportunity to review the amendments proposed, and I'm in favor of the majority of, of the amendments being proposed. Having listened to Mr. Elliott, I agree with the, and with the comments from the commissioners on the sidewalks. I think something of hybrid recommendation is probably in order, and would certainly hope that you take a look at that in that regard. And the other is with regard to the little structures, 120 square feet and under, no, I don't think a building permit is required for those. Just reword it. I think the setback requirements are in order, and I appreciate that. So thank you for your time and your efforts, I appreciate it.
Any questions if Kevin, no? Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it. Mike, do you want to add to anything that anyone has said, or some reasoning behind some of the staff's thought process?
Before Mike responds to that, I do want to make sure that you note that we did receive those two letters as well, that the commission has copies of, from Jenna Varavansky and from Ryan Botkins.
Right, and did the commissioners have time to read those? They did? Okay.
So, yeah, I just want to make sure that that was on record, they had concerns with the, addressing the projections of her maximum height, so they wanted to keep that, especially for the downtown north zoning district overlay.
Okay, thanks. Anything else, Mike?
I was just going to go over the hardship, the hardship.
You want to come up to the podium?
I was just going to address Art's concern with the hardship, and currently the hardship, if something burned down now, you could not build it at all, you'd have to meet the current code now. So right now, we're adding a, if it's before 1946, you'd be allowed to, but if we don't add this, then if anything that gets destroyed over 50% has to meet the current code. There is no provision, like if you built in 1982, you have to meet the 82 code or the 82 setbacks, there's nothing like that.
Okay.
So this is a provision we added in, from, direction from a member of the city council.
Could you change it from 1946 to 1846? 1900? I mean, that, that's the issue, you know, it's one day, is the likelihood of a...
Well, this is prior to 1946, so if we did prior to 1900, there's going to be less houses being built.
They're shacked.
But I thought that was the issue, that if you can one be one day off, and you, if your day after you can do it, if your day before you can't, and that's unfair. That's what I thought I heard you say.
Well, the date we chose is because that was the date the city adopted zoning codes. So if you built your house prior to zoning, that's, you had, you had that obligation to do that at that time, so in 1946, zoning was adopted, and codes were meant to be followed then.
So what difference does that make?
Yeah, but in 1946, the setbacks were different.
That's correct.
So that if that 1947 house is built to 1946 code, then it burns down, they have to jump right into our current code, is what you're saying. And that's what Art's taking exception to.
Well, the planning commission can come up with a date if they feel that 1946 isn't a good date.
Let me ask you a quick question here. So on the date that the city adopted building codes, if a home was already under construction prior to that date, it was already being built to no codes, even if it didn't get completed until October of 1946, correct? Or, I mean, if I were to assume it took a little bit longer to build, even though it started prior to that date?
That's correct.
So really, we're talking about any homes that were being permitted to be built effective that date in 1946?
That's correct.
Because at that point in time, then those codes would have been in effect, and that building would have had been built to that code?
Correct.
Okay. So we're really not talking about a house that was completed either the day before or the day after. It really has to do with start date with the permit in place versus not.
But my thought is, these people are already under duress, and then you're going to impose something as a modernization of what they formerly have, whereas if, it doesn't matter when it was built, and they want to rebuild it in that spot with that volume and with that height, why should we not allow them to do that? It's as if it just like, poof, it just was rebuilt. I don't know that we should impose that, they're already under duress, and they're already getting nothing from their insurance company, because we know how that works.
The current code is to bring non-conforming structures into conforming uses, and this is why this was put in place. So if something does, non-conforming structures over the line, it's not meaning setbacks, all the new structures would meet the current zoning code, and that's why the non-conforming language is in, in the code.
Yeah, I think that's a tough discriminating... Yeah, I think that's a tough discriminating, discriminatory idea at a date specific. I think that, you know, how does a homeowner know when they buy their 1947 structure that when it burns down, they're out of luck, because of one year.
And we had this discussion.
This was the workshop discussion.
It was.
I don't remember a date.
Yeah, and we didn't come to a conclusion, yeah, we didn't have a date.
I don't, if I remember correctly, we didn't have a date specific.
I think we just said when zoning adopted, and I haven't found the date.
When zoning was adopted.
When zoning, so this is when zoning was adopted.
Right.
I don't think we're there yet.
I think another question should be asked.
Hold on, Hillary, you want to say something?
I'm just going to clarify, we did, at that workshop, we had originally proposed, I think, 2000, and then we, that was kind of an arbitrary date.
Right.
So then, we had discussed that maybe it makes more sense when zoning was adopted. So it was, I believe we had the date in the minutes that it was in 1946. We just had to verify when exactly in that timeframe.
Okay, all right. Mike, you had, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to make another quick comment, you know, I mean, it reminds me of the conversation we had, gosh, what was my thought? I was listening to all the other conversations now. Come back to me in a bit.
Okay, go ahead.
Please, thank you.
The thing is, we have to pick a date.
Excuse me?
We need to pick a date, right?
Oh, I know what I was going to ask.
I'm not sure.
I know what I was going to ask.
We got to the Michael.
Thank you for reminding me.
Okay.
The question is, or the thought is, you know, statistically, how many homes are burning down? I mean, and it takes me back to the same, when we were talking about VRBOs, and, you know, how are we going to enforce the rules regarding VRBOs, and that one-off, when there's that one house that's rented out to a bunch of people, and they have a party, and creates disturbances and whatnot. So again, statistically, how many homes are we losing to fires?
A few.
And so, I mean, I understand the concern here with the September 23rd date, but ultimately...
And there is a provision for variances, so if someone wanted to come in, apply for variance, and come before the board, if they did have a hardship with the fire, they couldn't meet the code, it wasn't 1946, they would still have the variance procedure.
Ability to come to us for requests for variance.
Come to you to ask for variance, so long as it was on their property.
Oh boy, you just hammered me again.
Go ahead, you had a comment.
I was going to say, I think we're getting caught up on the year, more than what the year represents, which is a baseline. So 1946 is the year where we adopted the first zoning. So I think it's probably more important to think about the intent and the purpose, which is to bring conformity in building, and not what year it was, as much as what the baseline represents, right?
That's correct.
So if it was 1956, we'd be having the same discussion.
That's right.
So it's, for me, less about the year and more about what we're trying to achieve.
But that house has been in existence for 67 years, and this one day, now they can't replace it, but one that was built the day before, or the day after, they can. And I think that the date is, we would want to have a date where the majority of houses will be swept into that, should something happen to that house. The chances of it burning down, I think, are fairly, well, as Michael said, probably remote. We've got a pretty good fire department and all that stuff.
That's right.
So if that date is pushed earlier than 1946, but that seems to me we're doing a benefit to the property owner. They're built, they're living in a house that's not conforming, anyway, it didn't meet any codes, so they're built, they're going to have to have good material and so forth. They might, I just, I don't, I don't understand why we can't move that to a much earlier date.
Hmm? Any other?
1946 to 1900, something, something before 1918.
Okay. Go ahead, Hillary.
Oh, just to clarify, so the, you were wanting that the date shifts earlier, because if it shifts earlier, then there's even fewer homes that would qualify, so I think...
Yeah, you'd want to shift it closer, like 2000.
The intent from Councilman Gookin, when he had requested this initially, I think, was for the older neighborhoods, the older homes, to be able to rebuild in that same character. And so when we had our workshop with you, we kind of had talked about that that 1946 made sense, because that was kind of that era of those homes, that there probably is a lot more of that nonconformity in terms of the setbacks, the front setbacks and the side, and the rear setbacks. If there's a better date that you'd like to choose, we could do that. If we had it so that it was built in compliance with the code at the time, then we're going to have to chase down every code at the time for every permit that comes in. Again, we're probably not going to have that many homes that are going to burn to that degree, but I think those are the things we talked about at the workshop.
Maybe I'm wrong, on the wrong side of the issue, but what I, Art hit a responsive chord to me. If there's a day between day one and day two, and if you built one, the one that is built earlier is being penalized, and I would like, I think, or are they?
Later.
Later.
But later 1000 or 1990.
If it was built in 1900, you could still do it. 1920, you can, 1930, 1940, up to 1946. After 1946, you would have to, you'd have to meet the code.
But also looking at, besides the date here, having the ability for a house that might not be in the current setback with the foundation, I remember discussing that, saying, well, we're giving a break to the homeowner for a nonconforming home, if the foundation's okay, and you're, you know, not in the current setbacks, you can still rebuild your home on that foundation. So we've got two issues in here. As you say, the date is kind of arbitrary, and not, it's there, but we need to say also that they can build their home on their foundation. If it burns down, not saying, all right, take your foundation out, now you've got to be in compliance with the current codes.
That's what we talked about.
That's what we talked about in the workshop, and I thought that's what we were trying to do, saying, all right, your old home burns down, and you're not in conformance to the current setbacks, you can rebuild your home on your existing foundation, providing it is structurally sound.
And that is written in, the foundation part is written in on the code.
Right, yeah. Now, the date, we talked about, and I don't know if, I don't know how to answer, how you pick a date that's satisfactory to everybody. It's not to us, it goes to city council.
Right.
We just have to make a recommendation.
That's true.
So...
And are we burdening ourselves with, without having a date at all, for instance? I mean, the alternative is to not have a date, and then everything becomes a hardship variance request.
I...
Do we have the bandwidth to handle that type of volume? But again, then it goes back to my original question. How many homes really do burn down?
I think the answer is yes, Mike. I agree with you, I think that's the way to go. I'm sitting here saying, get rid of the date, get rid of the date.
And treat everything as a hardship.
There's not that many houses that burned down, period.
It is a hardship.
All right, hold on, what conversation? Yeah, go ahead, John.
There's not that many houses that burned down, period. Of those that do, there's going to be a very small number that don't meet current setbacks. And it's a case-by-case, and whether they were built in 1957 or 1973, for whatever reason, they were allowed to be the way they are, let them rebuild. It's a small, small, small number.
Provided the process exists for us to hear that variance request.
Right.
And given our compassion, I'm sure we would certainly listen with enthusiasm to make sure it was done properly, because it could very well reflect the character of the neighborhood.
Whether that was 1973, or 1923, or 1805, who cares? You know, and it's going to be such a small number, I think it's very manageable.
Okay, so you would like us to strike that date?
Me too.
All right. Anything else, Mike? Art, you had your hand up, you're good?
I have one, sorry, sorry, one more question.
One more question.
Don't go far, Mike.
No, right here, we have a question.
Does it, I can't find it, and I'm sorry, I should, but does it specify fire? Because I see damage.
It's damage.
So, so to me, that raises a concern, because it could be a tree on a windstorm, and we've been talking about fires, which is the extreme version, but...
It could be any type of natural...
It could be any type of damage. So if we open that up, then I think the hardship appeal could, could become more unwieldy from an administrative perspective, because someone whose tree fell a year ago, if we strike the date and have no baseline, and, I mean, fire is not explicitly or exclusively referred to in the code, right?
But it has to damage more than 50% of...
Over 50%.
So it'd have to be a small house and a big tree, for instance.
Correct.
Still, still fairly rare occurrence.
It is so rare.
To wipe a house up 50%, you know, that doesn't happen every day, but...
It is a rare occasion.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I'm here with respect to the letters that you have received on the one, or on some points regarding the maximum height and the height extensions. Jenna Boravansky, who wrote one of the emails, is here, and she may or may not want to address the council at some point, so I just wanted to let you know that she is here. I have, I'm here because of some comments in the letters that I wanted to clarify. In the letter from Ms. Boravansky, she talks about the International Building Code and the effect of the change in the, or proposed change in the ordinance, that it may violate the International Building Code standards of safety. And similarly, in Mr. Botkin's letter, he talks about roof access stairs needing weather protection for safety, and so forth. I have spoken with Ted Lancy, the building official, regarding this, and he has told me that the IBC, the International Building Code, does not address the planning department's height restrictions. Those are two separate issues. So the building code does not overrule the planning commission or the zoning code's height restrictions, and so they're kind of two separate issues. With respect to rooftop structures, the letters address a couple of things. One, elevators, and needing the rooftop structure for elevators. That is not necessarily true, because you can have, A, according to Mr. Lancy, you can have a hydraulic elevator that has no rooftop structure, it would be below ground, and so that's not necessarily an impediment to the, or does not necessarily require the extension of height. With respect to parapets or railings around a roof, those are not required by the building structure unless there's a proposed use of the rooftop, and so that's not always required. With respect to stairs and a structure on top of the building to, for access by stairs, again, that's not required by the building code. Rather, the stairs can go to the top floor, and there can be a hatch into the roof. So I just wanted to clarify those from our building official in terms of what is or is not required by the building, the IBC, the building code.
Any questions?
And Mr. Lancy would have been here, but he came down with a migraine and was unable to do that.
Okay, thanks, Sharon. All righty. At this point, I will close public hearing, and I'll bring it to the commissioners for discussion and recommendations.
Mr. Chairman. I'd, I'd like to float a motion that will probably get massaged a little bit, but we've got to start somewhere.
Be careful, I have this hammer in my hand.
Ah, so I would, I would like to motion that we move this to the city council with a recommendation for approval with a few tweaks. Tweak one would be to strike the date in the hardship section. Other tweak I would recommend in my motion would be that we adopt the city engineers' verbiage on the setbacks for accessory structures. Other tweak would be that we take the sidewalk changes off the table for now. And also, that last tweak that we clarify, that for the accessory uses in residential zones, for the 120-square-foot accessory building thing, structure, that we are looking for a site plan, not a building permit.
Okay.
So with those tweaks, move it to city council for enthusiastic approval.
I have a recommendation from Mr. Ingles, further discussion or ads, or...
Is this really something that we are going to direct back to staff to make changes before it goes to council then? Is that the proper step, or is this...
My thinking...
Our motion to take it to them, knowing that the changes that you're mentioning shall be incorporated in?
The latter. I think my thinking is that unless the commission has more extensive changes and tweaks, or we need things with a lot more analysis or whatnot, my thinking is, if, based on those that I threw out there, I think it could be fixed on the fly, if you will, you know, not...
Hillary, can you address that, please?
Yes, we can easily make those edits and go straight to council, if you're comfortable with that.
We've, one thing was missed, was the fill in Birmingham, and I think the point brought up, that if you are below the lie of the land of the adjacencies, that you should be able to come up to them, so you're not ending up to be a swale for your neighbors. So I think that, you know, that fill, it's in context with the adjacencies, and to address any current site problems that might cause drainage issues. Totally makes sense. It's just we don't want, you know, the fork grounds building up 10 feet thing, we want to avoid that from now on.
Go ahead, John.
So as I mentioned, I had a hunch there might be some morphage of the motion, and I like what you said, and I like Art's point, and I trust our Cracker Jack staff to, on the fly, between here and council, to come up with a little teeny verbiage that talks about the depressed site getting up to the neighborhood level, if you will, as another tweak in the motion.
Yeah, I'd bring it to the adjacent properties level of elevation of existing homes that are there. Go ahead, Randy.
Commissioner Fleming also mentioned to address drainage issues. I don't know if he wanted to add that or not.
Drainage for...
Well, it becomes a drainage problem if you're the low guy, and the rest are all draining onto you, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think we, I agree, however it comes up, that if you have a house in the middle of two homes, or adjacent to it, the new structure should be at the same level, at the property height as the adjacent properties. Is that okay, Mike?
Yes.
All right. So we have a recommendation by Ingles with some additional recommendations from other commissioners.
Just one comment on the sidewalk.
Go ahead.
For purposes of ADA and contiguous sidewalks, can we ask that the staff look at the, or prioritize sidewalks in the areas where there's, you know, sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk for safety in pedestrian areas, instead of a blanket, all sidewalks everywhere? Is there a way to finesse that, so that we do generate more pedestrian, and we are following the Trails and Bike Ways master plan, but without excess burden on neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks?
Hillary, you want to...
Maybe it's from Monty. And for Monty and Chris, and then they can chime in if they need to, but we're happy to work with them. We probably won't be ready to bring that forward to council with this round of amendments.
Okay.
But I think that would be a good way to handle it. I know they've been very involved with the Ped Bike Committee, and I know the Disability Action Center wants to weigh in, I'm sure, on, you know, any of the accessible routes, and then the safe routes to school. So I think that would be good, if we could look at kind of priorities of, areas of the city for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. So I, as I said, I have a recommendation by Ingles with some tweaks. Do I have a second on that recommendation?
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks, Mike. And just a roll call on that, Shannon?
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mandell?
Yes.
Utrip?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay, so we've decided to move forward with city council, let them look at it with a couple of tweaks. Mike, thank you for your work, and Hillary, thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, thank you for coming up to the podium tonight and speaking, appreciate it.
One more thing that I failed to mention earlier, when we were talking about the Atlas Waterfront site, that there will be more opportunities for public involvement with that in March and April.
Right.
And then, as we're starting on the conference of plan update, there's going to be lots of opportunities for public involvement in that as well. So we will work on getting the word out through social media and website, and inviting the public to participate.
And was that meeting going to be televised, or is it on just the social media, whatever that is?
Which meeting?
The waterfront, Atlas waterfront... The waterfront, Atlas waterfront? Because I know Sam was recording it.
Correct. There is a video online on the city's website right now. I don't know if that's also airing on CDA TV, but on the city's website, so cdaid.org/atlaswaterfront.
Okay.
There's the video and the results from the voting, from the Core Vision Group meeting, and other background information on the project. And that's where we'll also post information about other public involvement opportunities.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Call for motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, before we do that...
All right.
February's my favorite.
Real quick.
February is my favorite month.
Okay. We've got about 30 seconds here.
Yeah, I have that now, and the days are getting longer.
Well, we got, this is...
We got Groundhog's Day, we got Abraham Lincoln's birthday, we got pictures and catches reporting, we got George Washington's birthday coming up, which is the 22nd.
That's my favorite.
But my, my favorite is February 21st. So since I was in Harding, and maybe even the Pine Creek Lodge, my good friend, Butchy...
Okay.[1751.41]